I'd like to call the Region 15 Board of Education to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Student representatives Kelly and Liam, oh, Liam's not here, so Kelly, you get to do it all.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to begin talking today about scholarships. All of the local scholarships that are available to students are due to the Counseling Office tomorrow, March 24th, no later than 2:30. There are also applications in the Guidance Office and Career Center for non-local scholarships, which are a great way to be able to get money for college, not through the school. And students can check online to see what new non-local scholarships are available. So new ones are being added all the time, so it's a great opportunity. CAP testing will occur tomorrow at 7:20 for sophomores. And for students who are not taking the CAP test, school starts at 9:30 in the morning. The Run With The Panthers 5K, which I talked about last meeting, has been moved to Saturday, April 18th, at Pom Rock High School still, so everything's the same except the date has changed. Anyone can register online for this event or visit the Run With The Panthers website for more information, and it's a really great way for the community to become involved and help benefit the sophomore class. Grad night collage sessions will be held at the Southbury Public Library, and these offer help for parents who are making their senior collages for their students. And so there are many different sessions and dates available, and so the dates and times are all posted online, so parents can access that there. And then unfortunately Liam wasn't able to come today, so I'll be talking about sports as well. So the spring sports, including boys and girls track, golf, field hockey, and boys and girls tennis, has already started. And all this week there have been informational meetings about the sports, and there have also been tryouts and practices as well. So the games will start after spring break, and so Liam will get you more information next meeting about scores. And so that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions of Kelly? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to presentation. I am here tonight to propose Board of Education budget. I will be doing some of it. Mrs. Botzford will be doing some, Jennifer Conley and Paul Babrick. So I will begin. This year, the Board spent a significant amount of time working with Mrs. Botzford, Mr. McLivity, and our administrators preparing the budget. The Finance and Facilities Committee sponsored workshops for the full Board to examine significant cost centers like athletics, special education, and technology. Mrs. Botzford, Mr. McLivity, and Mrs. Lyman reviewed budget requests individually with administrators, and Mrs. Botzford presented her recommended budget to the Board last month. The Board then had two workshops to examine the budget in detail. Tonight, the Board is presenting the Superintendent's recommended budget as its proposed budget. The public hearing on the budget and the budget adoption will take place on April 6th. That's two weeks from tonight. This is the Region 15's mission statement. It guides what we do, and it guides the development of the budget. I'm sure I don't have to read it, and most people, I'm sure, are very familiar with our mission statement. The landscape of education is changing. Although most of us grew up in classrooms like the one on the left, today's students need opportunities to work in small groups, to use technology, and to use 21st century skills like problem-solving and critical thinking. It is incumbent upon us as a Board of Education to prepare our students for their future, because our present will be our students' past. This budget will reflect the commitment to preparing our students for their future. There are five significant areas of investment that the Board will be making in this budget. We will look at each of these as we continue. Technology is an important component of adequately preparing our students for the world that they are in and the world into which they will grow. And one of the issues that we faced is that, in the past, we have not always kept up with a responsible spending plan for technology. As a result, we have some catching up to do. This is a list of the technology needs that are provided in this budget. First and foremost is upgrading the infrastructure, also referred to as the backbone of our system. Additionally, we are making a commitment to replacing projectors and smart boards and to adding computers for the digital learning academy. Desktop and laptops in this slide that are six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 years old will be replaced. We will enter into a multi-year lease to pay for the equipment, with a budgeted cost in this budget of $60,000. We will be purchasing math textbooks for grades for the next year in grades K through three at all the elementary school at a cost of $40,000. Last year, when cuts were made to the budget, we made significant cuts to library books, both those housed in our school libraries and those housed in our classroom for reading instruction. This budget restores what had been cut in the previous year, so all schools will be able to buy books for classroom libraries and media center libraries. The cost is $82,232. We will replace the turf field at the high school next year, and we will pay for it with a multi-year financing. We will cover the financing cost in 2015 and '16 with capital reserves, which the Finance and Facility Committee has prudently built in just for this purpose. Since capital reserve funds are earmarked for this purpose, there is no budgetary impact on the '15-'16 budget. These are new textbooks that we will be providing for specific courses next year at PHS. AP Economics, $4,836; Personal Finance, $5,000; AP Calculus, $6,900, for a total cost of Now I will turn it over to Mrs. Botzford.
The Board will be asking the community to make an investment in education, and it's only fair for the community to ask, "What's our return on investment?" And the data consistently show a very high rate of return. In SAT scores, we outscore the state and the nation. Advanced placement courses are college-level courses. Of our students taking them, 86% earned a score of three or better, where three is the score which, in most colleges, gives our high school students college credit for those courses. So our students are being successful in college work and getting college credit for it while they are still at PHS. You will also notice that a total of 72 students were recognized for honors by the AP Testing The National Merit Corporation awards scholarships to high school students based on their performance on primarily the PSAT, but also the SAT and the student's individual academic achievement in high school. This year, we have eight commended students and two National Merit finalists. This is a great source of pride for us as a district, and of course, an even greater source of pride for them and their families. In the area of state tests, we consistently outscore the state. Here are some sample data at grades three, five, and eight in reading, writing, and And here are some of our college acceptances from last year's graduating class. It's a very, very impressive list. I would love to read the whole list. Boston College, Boston University, Columbia, I'm giving in to my desire, I hope you don't mind, please indulge me, Fairfield University, Fordham, Haverford, MIT, Miami of Ohio, NYU, Ohio State, Penn State, Quinnipiac, Tufts, University of Connecticut, of course, University of Michigan, Vassar, Virginia Polytechnic Institute, also known as Virginia Tech. I am also very pleased to report that 89.2%, almost 90% of our students go on to college, and that 25.6% of those students go to most competitive or highly competitive colleges. And just as important as the colleges that our graduates attend is their level of success once they get there. For five consecutive years, Region 15 has had an independent research firm do a data study to gauge how well our graduates are prepared for college, and the results have consistently been excellent, with a freshman GPA for PHS graduates in their freshman year at college every year above a 3.0. And an informal survey of colleges at all levels of competitiveness indicates that our graduates outperform the freshman class average in every class of competitiveness for colleges, from competitive all the way through most competitive. This is a summary that was provided in one of the reports that we had received for five consecutive years from the Independent Educational Research Company, Words and Numbers. I won't read the whole quote to you, but the highlighted part at the end, and the bolding is ours, was not in the original report, is that "The outcomes for this school district, Region 15, are remarkable and enviable." And now I'll turn it over to Mrs. Conley.
Here you can see a retrospective look at Region 15 budget increases. The Board's preliminary budget that we are presenting tonight is a 2.48% increase. These are some of the primary budget drivers that the Board had to consider in presenting this budget: efficiencies, services to students, class size, increases in fixed costs, and the potential reduction in state and federal grants. The items listed as secondary budget drivers are those improvements that we discussed earlier. Costs were listed on previous slides and will be summarized again in a subsequent Here are some examples of the cost-saving measures that we have applied in previous years and that continue to be applied. We are self-insured as of last school year, allowing us to bypass the management fee and save over $1 million each year. We purchase energy through consortia, and we participate in an energy conservation program, and we have converted from oil to natural gas heat at PHS, all resulting in significant savings that continue into this budget. You will see here a retrospective look at enrollment and staffing. To understand this data, it's important to understand that enrollment decreases do not occur all in the same grade, all in the same class, or in the same school. And you can see that we've been reducing staff as was possible, and at the same time we've been adding value to the services that we offer our students by beginning world language in grade six, beginning a digital academy at PHS, beginning and then expanding our SRBI program, which is a program for students who are not making as much progress as we would expect. We began full-day kindergarten and, in the past year, increased art and music time in grades three through five. One way to assess spending is to look at comparative data among districts, and to do that, the CDSE, the State Department of Education, calculates comparative spending in several ways. The most recent data available is from 2013-14. This particular set of data, net current expenditures per pupil, establishes an equitable database with which to compare costs among local and regional boards of education. These are objective data points that are helpful as an indicator of comparative spending. DURG-B is our state-designated group of socio-economically similar districts. Whether we look statewide or within our socio-economic group, Region 15 was among the lower-spending districts. This budget proposes no cuts to any services or programs for students. As you can see, it maintains full-day kindergarten, SRBI services, upgraded curricula, updating library materials, the digital learning academy, AP courses. It retains our commitment to up-to-date technology and keeps reasonable class sizes. In addition to maintaining these exemplary programs and practices, this budget provides for the improvements listed here that have already been mentioned. Here you see the financial impact of all the improvements in one place. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Babrick.
Here is the proportional distribution of the total dollar amount and the proposed budget by what is called object codes: salaries, insurance, transportation, and so on. It's significant to note that the only object in the budget that is discretionary is the instructional object, and that's only 2.56% of the total budget. All the other objects are driven by contractual or other obligated costs. Here we have salary increases, which are obligated by contract. We also are investing an additional $125,000 into our pension obligations, and we are funding an increase in collaboration time between special education aides and special and general education teachers to enhance content instruction. Insurance. Insurance covers our property insurance, liability insurance, and medical benefits. We do have increases in each, and these dollar increases include offsets from savings realized by being self-insured. Our transportation, an increase of $44,633. We have an increase in our transportation costs this year for both in-district transportation as well as out-of-district transportation. Instruction budget includes instructional supplies, and the bulk of the increase is due to a commitment to technology enhancements that are necessary that we discussed earlier. The instruction increase is $460,530. Rentals, leases, purchase services. The lease-purchase agreement is the first bullet, and now the third year of a four-year obligation. As the lease-purchase agreement in the second bullet is a multi-year lease that we discussed earlier that would replace desktops and laptops that are currently six through 11 years old. We also have an additional cost required for special education therapies like occupational therapy and speech therapy. Our facilities, an increase of $42,546. Facility increases are offset by savings from consortia and energy conservation. Tuition, an increase of $60,155. We are required to pay tuition for our students who go to vocational schools, or magnet schools, or special education schools. We budget this line item based on the student-by-student analysis to determine what is necessary. Debt decrease of $70,129. Finally, the debt service is a repayment of our obligated debt to pay off bonds that were floated to fund construction projects, the most recent being the addition of the new PHS main gym. We do have a decrease in this line. This table shows a comparison of the proportional share of region's budget that will be the fiscal responsibility of each town. The proportional share is based on the proportion of students that Region 15 educates from each town. By law, the calculation is based on enrollment on October 1st of the previous year. As you can see, Middlebury's proportional share is increasing by about 1/4 of 1%, and Southbury's share is decreasing by that same amount. Basically, this slide shows the budget increases from '14-'15. Here is a detail that identifies where the budget increases are going for a total increase at this time of 2.48%.
The policy is a shift in focus from the Board and administration's impetus for preventing substance abuse to, as the policy reads in the first sentence, "The Board is required by Connecticut law to prescribe rules for the management and discipline of its schools." And in keeping with this, the Board will take positive action, and it lists how we're going to do that. And then the policy also lists some definitions, as well as sets forth procedures when there is substance abuse or suspected abuse. I also draw your attention, we are voting tonight on the approval of two new sets of textbooks, which were mentioned in one of the previous slides. One is Single Variable Calculus, Early Transcendental with Vector Functions. The college system history for why we need these textbooks. College Board recommends textbooks are no longer than, no older than, 10 years. This course's current textbook is 13 years old. It was published in 2002. The new book is recommended by the College Board and is by a well-known author. It has lots of problem-solving, challenging problems that incorporate AP sample test items and solutions. There is an online version of the book. It's essentially a PDF of the book, and it is not any cheaper to buy the PDF. The second book is Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications. Our current text that we have was published in 2004. The new text, which is still several years old, will tie, I think, to 2011, ties in better to Common Core state standards. And the book is needed because the course has been redone a bit, and it is now Personal Finance rather than Consumer Math, which was a core course. Personal Finance is an academic course. This newer text supports that change, and the revised course reinforces math skills in a financial setting. And that's it. Did I say, yeah, the next meeting is April 27th? Did I say that?
Yes.
All right, said it again.
Thank you. Is there any report from PTO Advisory?
Yes, even with all the snow, the schools have been very busy, and I just wanted to highlight a few things going on. This March, at Middlebury Elementary, they are having their second annual month-long Read-A-Thon. It's a celebration of reading for the whole school. Students set a challenging but attainable daily reading goal and log their hours. Prizes are awarded. The month started off with a character kickoff parade. There was a guest reader day. This Thursday, there's a family read aloud night. They're doing a book exchange, and they're also partnering with the Middlebury Public Library to host a month-long scavenger hunt so students can help learn their way around their town library. At Roche &amp; Bowe Middle School, the PTO has funded smart boards in the band and art tech rooms and purchased additional LEGO robotics kits to support tech ed. There were not enough kits, and projects had to be dismantled and restarted. These new kits offer greater flexibility for students to continue programming without having to restart. At Memorial, the PTO has this year purchased LEGO robotic kits as well, a flat-screen monitor for tech ed, a new computer-on-wheels cart stocked with Chromebooks, and a new portable PA system for indoor and outdoor assemblies. And also, if everyone could mark their calendars, they have set the date for the Region 15 Volunteer Dinner. It is a Kentucky Derby theme, and Kentucky Derby attire is strongly encouraged. It will be Monday, May 4th, again at the Heritage, from about 5 to 9:00, and invitations will soon follow. Thank you.
Do you come dressed as a horse, or do you have to wear a hat?
Jennifer, just one quick question. You mentioned something about, was it Memorial Middle School, where the PTO purchased a cow stocked with Chromebooks? Was that correct? Do you remember how many Chromebooks there were in that? 10? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions of Jennifer? Any additional questions, I should say. Okay, thank you. Board member comments? No comments? No? No comments? Okay. Move on to Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair, as the agenda indicates, there is no personnel report this evening. However, I do have two special achievements to announce. The first is a teacher achievement. Jane Martellino, the librarian-media specialist at PES, and Carolyn Matthews, grade-four teacher at PES, have advised us that they have been selected as winners of the Connecticut Association of School Librarians Fawlett Creativity Award for 2015. This award recognizes outstanding creative and collaborative instruction integrating subject content with school library standards and technology. This was a beautiful example of the collaboration work that Region 15 is doing between our library-media specialists and our teachers in grades three through five. This particular project was the Nutmeg Newspaper Project, and the teachers have received a $1,000 award and will be presenting their work at the annual Castle Conference coming up soon. So we offer them our great congratulations to Jane and Carolyn. Wonderful achievement. I am twice blessed this evening, because I also have the pleasure of announcing a student achievement. Jordan Ocella has just returned from Washington, DC, where he was personally honored by President Obama at the White House Student Film Festival for his short film entitled "One Pebble," which was rated in the top 2% of student films in the nation. Jordan is the director of our board-meeting film crew, so he is currently working in the back room to make sure that all this filming is going exactly right. But I believe that he might be able to step out so that we can congratulate him. Jordan. And there he is. And there he is.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, it is true. I just got back. I went pretty much straight from the car to work, so I haven't really been home yet. But, yeah, it was a tremendous honor. It was, I got to go to the White House Friday, and I went there with a ton of other winners and students. The top 1% and 2% got to go to the White House and be individually congratulated by Obama, Mr. President, and it was a great honor to just even see him in general, but to talk to him and actually just converse with him like he's just a normal, you know, casual person was a pretty big deal in the first place. And he's not taller than I thought he was, so you don't really think about seeing him in person until he's there, and you're just like, "Oh, hey." But it was really cool, and it was just a tremendous experience. You got to meet, other celebrities were there, too. If anyone watches Glee, a lot of the cast was there. I met them. And Terrence J. was there, Kal Penn was there, and a lot of cool celebrities that I got to talk to and just converse with and get tips from industry insiders and stuff. And the films were played, and then, at the end of the whole thing, the next day, we all got to go to a place called The Museum in DC. And we got to go to a workshop with industry insiders, and I got to do an acting workshop. I got to do a filmmaking workshop. And it was just a tremendous experience and opportunity to even be able to meet, you know, so many of these great people. So I'm super proud of that, super proud of just being able to be nationally recognized in the first place. So, yeah, thank you guys so much. It was just a great time, and I'm just super happy it happened. Thank you.
Yeah, Jordan's going to mention where and when and how we can view his video.
Yeah, something actually cool is that after this meeting, all the repeating, you know, sessions of this meeting on TV, the video "One Pebble" will be played after on TV for all the repeating, you know, times this will be played, as well as you can just go on YouTube and search my name, Jordan Ocella, or you can just search "One Pebble." It's the first one, which is pretty convenient. So you could check it out online, or anytime this is going to be played on TV, it'll be played afterwards for anyone that wants to see it, you know, on TV, or anyone watching at home. But thank you guys so much. Got to go get back to work.
Thank you, Jordan. That was special. Okay, comments from citizens, please? Any comments? Okay, please state your name and the town that you come from, please.
Hi, I'm Christine Kubation from Southbury, and I will be very brief. I just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work that went into this budget. I'm very supportive of the 2.45? 2.48? Very supportive of that. I feel very strongly that it will pass, and I will work very, very hard to make sure that happens in the towns that I work in. And I also say, I hope that you all support it as well. I think it's very important that the Board just not talk about this budget during the workshops and tonight, just presenting it. I think it's important that we start a conversation, and we talk about it with our fellow citizens and our friends and our family members, and we talk about what this means and what it means to our kids. And I would love to see that this budget be completely supported by all of our board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any other comments? Okay, I'm glad you stressed that it's a 2.48 increase and not a 2.5, because what difference does that make? You know?
A lot.
A lot. About how much? 16?
No, 12.
60,000? Yeah, so there's a big difference between 2.5, which sometimes gets reported, and 2.48. So I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, there is no old business?
Sorry, no. Sorry, no.
Okay, new business requiring Board action. I need a motion for approval of new textbooks, please.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new textbook, Single Variable Calculus: Early Transcendental with Vector Functions.
That's a tongue twister. Could I have a second with on that tongue twister? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? One abstention. Okay, I need a motion for the other textbook.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new textbook, Financial Algebra.
That was easier. Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An abstention? One abstention. Okay, I thank you all. Announcement of future meetings. Wednesday, March 25th, this coming Wednesday, will be Finance and Facilities Committee meeting at Central Office at 5:30. On Monday, a very important night, we will have our public hearing at 7:30, and after that, the Board will take a vote on the number that will be presented to the public for consideration on referendum day. And Monday, April, I just said that. I won't repeat myself. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and good night. That was really nice for Jane.
Welcome to my world.
I know.
But for whatever, whatever towards she's on the other.
I would buy. How long?
Three minutes.
Oh, we should have showed him.